I amend the agenda to add item fourteen, which would be the endorsement of the Ferndale Proclamation of June as the crime month. Is there such a motion?
I'd like...
I support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to also amend the agenda. May we move item number that, well, was item fourteen, which must, whatever it's been moved to for public discussion, forward in the agenda to item five A. It's approximately the normal place for public discussion for items not on the agenda. And sort of out of consistency and just because we have so many residents here this evening, if we could hold the public discussion up front of the agenda, I think it would be a good spot for it.
Typically, at the June meeting, we do the, all the budget items first. If we did that, I would say we were limited to no more than an hour, so that we can get the budget adopted and everything in place to be able to adopt the budget.
Okay.
Adopt the tax rate.
All right.
Pay the bills of the city. Want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we move item number fourteen, public discussion, forward in the agenda to item five A.
For a period not to exceed an hour?
For a period not to exceed an hour. And then, any leftover public discussion can be moved to the end?
For a period not to exceed Thursday?
Yes.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the following minutes: Regular City Commission Meeting held Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand thirteen; Public Hearing and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting held Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen; Regular City Commission Meeting held Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen; and Special City Commission Meeting held Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the minutes of the Regular City Commission Meeting held Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand thirteen, as amended, and that the minutes of the Public Hearing and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting held Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen; the Regular City Commission Meeting held Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen; and the Special City Commission Meeting held Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Robino?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question here. We had this prepared statement. We asked that the proclamation by our president, be also put in the minutes? I don't see it in here.
Those are automatically attached to the proclamation resolution.
Okay. Yes.
The conversation has been added.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the May two thousand thirteen personal report.
Payroll on accounts payable for the month of May was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll for the month was eighty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars and three cents. Accounts payable was two hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and nine cents.
Questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the May's first report be approved as listed.
Is there support?
I second that.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Robino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is number five A, public discussion. Items not on the agenda.
I want to say that I appreciate the efforts of our elected officials put forth that they do for the city. I'm sincerely grateful for the many hours they donate to try and make our city better. I believe they should be treated generally with respect and basic decency. However, it's a duty of the citizen to pay attention, to ask questions, voice criticism when the situation warrants it. I rise regretfully today. This is not easy for me to do, and I really don't want to, but I'm here, and I feel that I have to. I'm here tonight to express my disappointment on how the May meeting was conducted. The meeting is on YouTube, and I encourage all citizens to view it if they haven't seen What I saw was a premeditated personal attack by our city manager on one elected official. Sherry Ball was aided and abetted by Mayor Costelli. Commissioner Crisier was not extended the courtesy of fair warning to prepare himself for the stealth attack. That fact alone put him at a disadvantage and rendered the proceedings unfair. Public disclosure. I live on Wellsley. Jason Crisier lives on Wellsley. We are friends. I respect him. I have seen him interact with his wife, his children, and our neighbors. I know him as a kind, good-natured man who is a caring father and husband. I think most people who know Jason, who live on Wellsley, will tell you he's a fine neighbor. I have never heard, and I repeat, never, I've never heard from anyone that Jason had been rude, discourteous, or threatening to anyone. If you know Jason, the charge that he was vengeful or vindictive to Ms. Ball seems so unlikely to me in strange credibility. Commissioner Crisier's job mandates that he file a private evaluation of the city manager's performance. Ms. Ball took issue with the evaluation. Mr. Crisier's evaluation was not as complimentary as she perhaps felt she deserved. I don't doubt that Sherry was angry. I don't doubt that her feelings were hurt. She could have expressed her feelings to Mr. Crisier in private, but chose instead to air them publicly. In my view, she did the city and herself no favors by doing so. It simply opened up Ms. Ball to more scrutiny and criticism. I watched the video twice, which I never do, but I was so shocked by what happened here. I watched it again and picked up some things that I wouldn't have picked up the first time. I'm going to share some of them here. It simply opened up Ms. Ball to more scrutiny and criticism. I have never seen anyone allowed so much time at a public meeting to praise herself and trash someone else. Sherry stated, and I quote, "I don't like to toot my own horn," and then proceeded to do so while attacking Commissioner Crisier repeatedly. One of the items that Sherry took issue with was Mr. Crisier's assertion that she responded poorly to criticism. She then went on to prove his point. After watching a vengeful diatribe for well over an hour, I think that a thoughtful person would have to consider that she reinforced Commissioner Crisier's assertion. Also, earlier in the meeting, and on another topic, there was a revealing dialogue between Commissioner Perry and Ms. Ball. Commissioner Perry was specifically but politely asking about a communication she received from Sherry that stated the trees near the pool area would be removed and replaced. I'm going to rehash that issue. That's not what I'm after. Apparently, the statement was not accurate, and after a bit of back and forth, Sherry somewhat dismissively admitted that, well, it just should have said removal. Let's be clear here. The information Sherry sent to the commissioners was false. Of course, later in the meeting, she was claiming that Mr. Crisier's criticism of her less-than-stellar communication with the commission was unwarranted, even though he had just watched an obvious example of a miscommunication just minutes before. She would have done well to omit that part from her presentation. It's a credibility issue and another example of Sherry's difficulty with handling criticism. This gives me no pleasure to go through this. The worst part of Sherry's ongoing attack was introducing revenge as Jason's motive for her evaluation. His water payment was late, and his water was shut off, and in retaliation, she and the mayor claimed he gave her lower marks than she deserved. They actually want us to believe that someone who had his water shut off by the city would react by thinking, let's see, I was late with my payment, they shut my water off, it must be that darn Sherry Ball's fault. It makes no sense. You know, I gave this quite a bit of thought. The more I considered it, the more I realized I couldn't come up with one person that I know that would react that way. That actually, because they didn't pay their water bill, would try to get revenge on someone else for shutting their water off. I would be surprised if most of you know anybody, if you could name them. Look, I don't know why the Crisier's payment was late. Frankly, it's none of my business. Moreover, it isn't anyone else's business either. But for Sherry to take private information that belongs in confidential trust and use it publicly for payback is unseemly and unethical. At the March City Commissioners Meeting, Mr. Crisier stated that he felt Sherry Ball was doing an excellent job. Ms. Ball and the mayor charged that this is proof that Mr. Crisier's motive was revenge. He praises Sherry, his water is shut off, therefore, the criticism under evaluation must be in retaliation. Mayor Costelli's, were you lying then, or are you lying now? Cheap lawyer's ploy, was particularly offensive. This attack appears to me to show desperation and grasping at straws. Pains me to say this, but this type of slander may say more about their characters than Jason's. By the way, I have my own theory on the subject. I think my theory is far more believable than theirs. Consider this. In business as well as public office, the practice praise publicly, criticize privately, is commonly used. Jason did just that at the March meeting. Sherry does many positive things in her job. She is capable, she is experienced. He praised her publicly. Any thoughts that Jason had about Sherry's performance that were not as positive could be addressed in private in his review. Praise publicly, criticize private. In effect, Commissioner Crisier chose to take the high road. Mayor Costelli and Ms. Ball could have ordered, could have offered the same courtesy to Jason. They chose not to. Again, if you're not here for the May meeting, or if you have not seen it, I urge you to view it on YouTube. Under great and unreasonable duress, Mr. Crisier's demeanor and poise demonstrates the antithesis of how his attackers would have had, would have us view him. Threatening and vengeful hardly, Jason attempts to defend himself in a reasoned manner despite numerous interruptions. He keeps his poise when Ms. Ball admits she doesn't want him to have a chance to explain his side. "This is my time," she declares. Even as Jason declares that he welcomes discussion, that he is glad people came to express their views, he is interrupted by taunts of jackass and shut up by those out of control. During all this, the mayor accuses Jason of raising his voice to intimidate Sherry. For the record, watch YouTube, it simply doesn't happen. Mayor Costelli also does absolutely nothing to stop the loss of control in the meeting. He chooses to allow the mayhem to continue and never uses his gavel to maintain any semblance of order. I'm just now starting to think that perhaps, I don't know this, but perhaps, the whole thing may have been orchestrated with the intent of forcing Jason to lose poise and help their argument. It didn't happen. Jason remained under control. If anything, he demonstrated that it simply is not in his temperament to react violently, violently, and strike back in anger. They threw everything but the kitchen sink at him, but it wasn't effective. There was vengeance indeed displayed at this meeting. The length and breadth of it was beyond the pale. There was vengeance, but it was directed at Jason Crisier, not by him. On the May meeting agenda, the item discussion of city manager's evaluation was listed. For the record, this was no discussion, and I don't believe it was ever meant to be. It was an attempt at a political hit. Thank you for allowing me to view my feelings. This isn't easy for me, again. I'm sincere about it, and I believe what I say to be the truth. No one asked me to do it. I didn't tell Jason I was going to do it. I just felt that sometimes, if you see injustice, endure saying nothing is viewed as acceptance. And what happened at the last meeting to me was clearly unacceptable. Commissioner Crisier, thank you for your service. Thank you for your patience, and I thank you for your integrity.
Dave Tiger, fourteen Oakdale Boulevard, Pleasant Ridge. I was twenty years a school administrator for the Health School of Detroit. In that process, and this won't make relevance momentarily, I had seven different unions, including my own, I dealt with. So, labor relations, contracts, grievance process was all part of this package. What I saw at the May meeting was a grievance hearing. An employee, and I think Jason has, you've gone through grievance hearings enough times, an employee had eight grievance with management, this is the commission, brought the grievance to the city manager, commission, asked that there be a remedy to this situation. The remedy was then proposed, with three people supporting, one person abstaining, one person saying that it should stand as it was. So, I saw this as a, the only way that this, this process could have happened. Had this process happened in private, there's no way that five with the city commission could have gotten together, had a vote to remove a offensive and incorrect, in my opinion, we share differences on this.
I agree.
Report. If a teacher or administrator had put something in my file that said I was a poor person after praising me publicly, I would have filed a grievance on it, which is essentially what Sherry did. This was her only mechanism for doing this, to have this record removed. That's what she did. Thank you.
Somebody has to help me here.
Truly, truly, welcome back to City Hall, Mr. Gillis. Longtime city attorney, probably the smartest man I know, the only Oxford scholar I've ever known.
Been a long time since I've been here.
You're still hanging on the wall.
Yeah, I know. I'm hanging a lot of it. I'd like to say, right off the bat, that my wife, Kathy, and I have been long-term, longtime fans of the city of Pleasant Ridge. We've lived here now more than half a century. We're in our third home. We started out at twenty-two Hanover. As the family grew larger, we moved to twenty-five Cambridge. And thereafter, as the, my three sons began to depart our household, I asked my wife where she'd like to go next. She said she didn't care as long as it was in about a block and a half of where we were, which we did, and we now reside at Six Norwich. Kathy has been very active in the community. She's been an ardent supporter of the Pleasant Ridge Foundation, the Astor Commission, where she's been extremely active, Hand Crafters Club that she formed, the Arts Council, and all sorts of other activities, including monthly changes to the bulletin board in front of the pool, month change of seasons. Two thousand and two, she was awarded the Pleasant Ridge of the Year Award, which she richly deserved. As for me, I'm just old. However, they say you're just as old as you feel. And on that basis, I'm now a hundred and four. I have some comments to make, and then I have a proposal to make to the commission, which affects, I hope, other members of the community. My own activities in the city started out with several years of Pleasant Ridge Planning Committee, Planning Commission, and then followed by twenty-eight years as the Pleasant Ridge City Attorney. From nineteen seventy-two to the year two thousand, when I voluntarily resigned as seemingly mason of the commission at the time, and other people. I got busy with other things, and I just thought it was time, in consideration of the new millennium, year two thousand, to give someone else a chance. In addition to serving twenty-eight years on the city, as the city attorney, I also became the attorney for twenty-seven cities relating to cable television matters. In connection with those duties, I had to meet on numerous occasions with city officials, mayors, village trustees, city commissioners, city managers, assistant city managers, and it was an extremely interesting experience. I mention all those, and not as a matter of self-aggrandizement, which is rather pointless at my age, but in the hope that it might give my views about certain affairs in the city some credibility. And I know there are a lot of people here tonight who have things to say. I am very disappointed at the turn it has taken, the level of animosity apparently on the part of some citizens about the last meeting and the dispute involving the commissioner and the city manager. I have a lot of information that I'm the only one privy to. And when I give my evaluation of both the mayor and the city manager, my evaluation standing by itself is not enough. I need to have some backup material that will support that evaluation. But the information that I have is far in excess of just those issues. I had a lot of experience with city officials in the city of Ferndale, and I have a debt of gratitude that I owe the city of Ferndale and its officials, and I'd like to make clear why that is. I have information about major events in the city's history that no one else has. They've either passed on, literally passed on, or have moved elsewhere. I think the last, one of the last commissioners that had some knowledge of what I plan to talk about was Commissioner Mark Lachey, who's since left Pleasant Ridge, and I can't talk the state of Michigan, or he's not anywhere near here anymore. I think you'll find some of the things I have to say interesting, particularly with respect to some issues which have divided the city in the past. These amount of matters relating to the, I think, the last election, which developed quite a bit on the fire contract of the city of Ferndale. I should say that I'm also well-known to Mark Wellenwupper, who I well know. And so, I think it would be interesting, and may sort of change some people's minds about some of these issues that I'm privy to. They're not secret, they're not confidential, they're just matters of history. And so, my proposal is that subsequent to this meeting, there'd be another meeting in which my comments and my review of history of the city with respect to these major matters, including the condemnation case that reached the Michigan Supreme Court, would be of great interest. And I think just meeting with the commission would not be enough. I would urgently hope that the meeting be open to all the residents of the community who wish to attend. And with that background, I need to tell you that I have unequivocal evaluations of my own with respect to the mayor, and with respect to the city manager. I award each of them the highest possible marks. And in doing that, I compare them not only to what I know of their own work here, but in comparison to other city officials that I've mentioned in the twenty-seven cities that I've represented. And I hope very much that you find it of interest to grant me my proposal, the meeting, and discussing these matters. I think it'll be a revelation to many of you. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your time and my, and commission meeting schedule.
Thank you. There's a, City Commission talking, I'm sure it's the twenty-seventh, I think it is?
Yes.
I haven't gotten this.
I think it's the twenty-seventh.
Have we rescheduled that?
Yes, we did a, a, not a budget workshop, the meeting we held two weeks ago about the closed session, Commissioner Perry.
Oh, for the, the last.
Let's see, we can compare the dates.
Right.
All right.
Twenty-seventh is when we, yeah.
So, I think that would be an appropriate time.
What's the date?
June twenty-seventh, it's a Thursday.
Oh, that sounds.
It's at Four Ridge.
That sounds fun.
Thank you.
You go.
Thank you. How's your bedtime?
I've got work to do.
Anna?
I'm a long-time resident of Pleasant Ridge.
Anna, I'm sorry, but you have to come up here too.
I have to go over there. Me and my, my partner here, I had a new hip put in three months ago. So, I'm still a little uncertain of the whole idea. But I wanted to say a few words about being an old-timer. I moved here in nineteen sixty-four. I immediately was stomped on by the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club, because they found out I'd been in the Women's Club in Ohio. So, in two more years, I was president of the thing. And then, when I went to work full-time, I couldn't get that day off that the Women's Club met every month. So, I went to the Garden Club, which I could get that day off. First thing you know, I was president of that. And then, a few years later, I was president again of the Garden Club. And in, in between all of this, some of you may not know, and most of you have heard about it, there was a rummy sale and auction in a wonderful tent on Ten Mile and where the tennis courts were. And every year that that thing ran, I was there working like crazy and praying that tent stayed up, because every time it rained and stormed, and here's the tent going up and down, up and down, and we're standing in water, which was electricity going through the air. But we all made it, and we went then to the quantum. And with change in times and people's economic positions, the auction and rummy sale disappeared to what the foundation is building now, having their galas of sort each year. But during the time of the auction and rummy sale, there was harmony developed between the two sides of the city, where they had been Pleasant Ridge and Pleasant Ridge. Because when I moved here, I thought that was the most ridiculous thing I'd ever heard, a city divided by such words. And of course, Woodward Avenue divides us. So what? It's got lights, so you can come across the street. And there's so many lovely houses over there nowadays, I don't think I can even think about being Pleasant Ridge. And I think it's disgusting to think that people are raking that up, that they still think of that as Pleasant Ridge and this as Pleasant Ridge. Because I live in so-called Pleasant Ridge, but I've probably got the smallest house on the west side of Woodward. But I've never felt like I lived in the smallest house, because people are big enough to not let that matter. And I think we should be big enough now to quit trying to make that matter again. And I think we should be big enough now to quit trying to make that matter again. It's not fair, it's not healthy, and it's wrong. We should stick together as one good city. And our elected officials, we should teach them kindly. And we should have, if we find fault with them, hash it out quietly and come to conclusions quietly. Don't make it up on television thing. It's just not healthy and it's not right.
Is anybody else trying to count out the event?
Hello? My name's Jay Forman, 79 Maplefield.
Is there a problem?
Yes, audio problem.
Jay Forman, 79 Maplefield, just want to make a couple of quick comments. I want to express my extreme disappointment regarding the matter of performance review at the last commission meeting and the way that the tone that the meeting was allowed to take. Like many others that are here tonight, I sat here for more than an hour listening to Sherry's comments and responses to the many review comments that were provided by Commissioner Crzyjak. I didn't really agree with the way that she chose to bring those grievances up publicly, but I understand that it's her right to do something, that's fine. My biggest problems are, one, the fact that the meeting was allowed to get completely out of control, with residents in the audience yelling, name-calling, and many other things. Two, the way that, oh, I've lost my train of thought, but that was the main reason, the tone that it was allowed to take. And I think there's a gavel and we can use it a certain way, and massaging the bench is not enough for something like that. It was completely out of order. The last point I would make is that as a resident of the city, I don't ever want to see anything like that occur again. I felt it was disgusting and I was embarrassed and ashamed for the tone and the image that Pleasant Ridge is broadcasting to the world at that point. I just kind of wanted to hang my head down and pretend I wasn't here. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name's David Stone, I'm on 14 Norwich. My son Adrian's here, Ava, my wife Gollin. I feel in many ways echoing the sentiments of some of my neighbors. And that's the thing, is we are all neighbors. We all, excuse me, we're all here because we care about our city. And I can only echo the sentiments of my residents and neighbors that what we saw was like almost watching the train run. You know, we should be remembering that, you know, that there are kids watching. I'm sorry, I get an emotional because it just wasn't right. You know, when we think about having an issue with someone else, it should be thought of as being done privately. And not putting someone's name, his family, his children, is disrespectful to them. We're neighbors. You don't have to thank each other. You should respect each other. And we respect the office, but we respect each other, that's all. And, you know, again, I feel in many ways I'm echoing the sentiments that I've already said. But let's try to come together and respect each other. And by the way, if I recall in the minutes, it was asked to expunge the evaluation. Well, the evaluation is on YouTube, so how do you expunge that?
Thank you.
I'm Callie Stone, I live in 14 Norwich. I also wanted to express my feelings about last month's commission meeting. Typically, I watch the meetings, I try to attend, but if I can't, my son and I watch the meetings at home. And we were having a nice evening watching it. The mayor's 20-year celebration was being recognized, we were very excited about that. And when it came to the city manager's evaluation review, it took a turn in a direction that I did not expect. I was sitting there with my son and I was in shock and I told him, "Just sit tight, it will stop, this will be put to an end. Someone on this commission, the mayor, will stop this." It continued on and on, and finally I had to ask him to leave and I watched it by myself later because I didn't want him to see what was going on. That our public, well, a city employee was allowed to take the opportunity, really a bully pulpit in my opinion, to express her grievances about her own evaluation, her personal evaluation, and embarrass us as a city and take a commissioner off-guard clearly. It was evident in what I saw. And I, I just, I just was so taken back by it. And I, I tried to teach, and I did, like, he did hear some of it because it got to the point when the water bill, and that was addressed. And I thought about how, how is it that a city employee can take a resident's personal information and use it in a public setting like this for their own purposes? It makes me wonder how the integrity of any of our grievances as city residents will be taken in the future. Anything, if I'm late on my water bill, my taxes, what have you, is that going to be made to be a public ridicule by this city manager or anybody else on this commission? How do I trust all of you with our personal information going forward? I mean, the public trust is eroded here. I'm like, I don't know how you can allow this to continue, like, where is the integrity here? I mean, how do we continue after this? How do the citizens trust Mrs. Ball with our personal information, when she had no problem stating earlier in that evening that she did have, she knows things about people in the community, she's personal with people, she knows their private affairs, yet she had no problem voicing it in a public setting and to embarrass the commissioner? And I just, I think that really there needs to be a serious discussion once you report back to us about how we move forward from here because I think that the trust has been eroded here. I just don't know how you do that. I mean, if Amy or Scott have an evaluation, as a city employee, as Ms. Ball is, and they have a grievance with it and they don't like it, so they can come here and call out whoever, whatever commissioner they don't like their evaluation with, and they can publicly do that? I mean, is that what we're saying, this is the precedent moving forward? I just don't, I don't think this is where we want to go as a community. It's, it was a, it was a very low day for Pleasant Ridge. It was a sad day and I don't want to see this ever again, I do not. I enjoy living here, there's a lot that I love about this city, but this was a low point. And I hope that there is something done, or Mayor, that you can be the person to move this forward and guide, guide us. I mean, we need some guidance here because honestly, I thought that this would have stopped and I was surprised as other residents that you did not stop this. It should have been stopped. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Allorie Epstein, I live at 78 Oakdale. I'm here tonight just to voice my opinion about what happened at the last meeting. I was a newspaper reporter for many years, I attended more council meetings than I care to remember. And I've never seen anything happen like what happened at that meeting. I don't know whether it's legal, not legal, it didn't seem right airing someone's financial difficulties in public was painful. And trying to discuss a performance review in public also was painful. We run a business, my husband and I, and we do performance reviews. If there's an issue with when we do it privately with the employee, we don't do it company-wide. It's, it's not something that needs to be shared with the whole. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tracy, I'm strong, I live at 89 Oakdale. I've lived in Pleasant Ridge for over 20 years. I have to admit, I haven't been to many city commissioner meetings. And one of the first ones I went to was when the Berkeley Public Safety System was being considered. And after that meeting, I was very dismayed about the way our city was considering the thoughts and the ideas of our residents. And so since then, I've been paying more attention, although I'm not at the meetings and I certainly watch them online. And I thought that last month's meeting was disgusting. I felt that Commissioner Crzyjak was unfairly, he was not prepared in order to even make a rebuttal to what Ms. Ball talked about for over an hour. He was given less than five minutes to even speak. And the way that our residents actually spoke to him was completely disrespectful for a man that's volunteering his important time, he has three children, and he's volunteering his time to do research and try to make decisions that are on behalf of the rest of our residents. And I feel that the mayor and Ms. Ball owe not only Mr. Crzyjak an apology, but the residents of the city.
I want to, I'm going to try not to echo what other people said. I am an employment discrimination attorney and because of that, I see a lot of reviews. I deal with that in my job. And I heard that review and because, I mean, because of my, my career, as I watched, I wasn't here, but I watched the meeting and I wrote down everything, of course. And I thought, as I reread the review, I thought, there are areas where Commissioner Crzyjak rated Ms. Ball as doing a fabulous job, exceeds performance. And there were areas where he rated her as needing performance. And I thought to myself, this is a mark, he obviously spent a lot of time thinking about how he felt about her performance. And that's, as an elected official, as, that's what you want in your elected official, someone that takes the care to do that. And I thought about Ms. Ball's reaction and I represent plaintiffs. So it reminded me of a lot of my clients that come to me. You get upset when someone ranks you and rates you in a way that you think is unfair. It happens a lot. It particularly happens when there's a change in guard. And that's what's happened here. And it made me sad on a personal level to see how the meeting was handled because I felt actually badly for everybody. Ms. Ball, I felt this was private and I wish she hadn't aired it publicly. I wish that, understanding the frustration she must have felt, that it be raised in private setting where they could talk about it and hash things out. Because it's raised publicly now, I feel now, you know, we have to talk about it and now that's what we're doing. So I am going to say this. Ms. Ball, you raised the issue of bias. You indicated that you felt it was Mr. Commissioner Crzyjak's bias that guided and motivated this review. And the issue that was raised was his late water bill. And I thought to myself, if he were biased, why would he rate you as exceeding performance in some areas? Why would he take so much care in really trying to pinpoint and explain his, his view of deficiencies? So what I'm hoping is that this doesn't happen again, that the issues that are private remain private. And I think it's totally, Ms. Ball's, it's your right and obligation to defend yourself and you should do that in writing. You should do that in writing and it should be placed in a personal file. Commissioner Crzyjak, it's your right, we elected you to be honest, to be forthcoming and to do the job, your job, to the best of your ability. If you disagree about Ms. Ball's perfor, sorry, if your view of her performance is different than all the other commissioners and the mayor, that's okay. And mind you, that's okay, as long as you're thoughtful and you're truthful.
I may just be a kid, but I still have my points of view on this city. I relate this to when I get a report from, I don't go to the teachers and for the class that I think I should have got the scores on the best in the class. You just think about how you can improve, how you can do better in the future. If you don't agree with it, ask for why should you give an evaluation? Not every teacher at school thinks the same way about me. That's okay because they each have their personal views. It's okay in everyone's views, that's what the review's for. Thank you.
David Epstein, 78 Oakdale. All I can think about is we just heard a lesson from a boy who's how old?
A ten.
A ten-year-old just gave us things to look back. Remarkable. And I just want to say, according to what she was saying regarding being an employment attorney, if that's correct?
I'd say.
I didn't want to misrepresent you.
No.
Okay, is that I've never heard of something just being removed from somebody's employee file because they didn't like it. Or that, worse yet, she didn't remove it, the body removed it, the council body removed it supposedly, sort of by vote, I would say. But I'm a little suspect because some people wanted to amend that vote, but they weren't allowed to. And, you know, I know there was even a FOIA request recently to see that report. It doesn't exist anymore. That was the response, there's no such document. And I think that is very, very scary, that things can appear and things can disappear. And that certain people that have been elected to represent us have that ability to do that. And I think that's really scary.
Would you like to address that last issue?
About the document no longer exists, it's a little bit different when you're a public employee than when you are employed by a private business. And there are certain protections that apply to public employees that do not apply necessarily to those in the private world. One of them is that if this, if there is disagreement with an item in your personnel file, you can request that the governing body remove it, expunge it, and that vote was taken and that was passed. And therefore, that document does not exist. It is legal and allowable.
I have a question. Is there, is there protocol as to, is there some kind of due diligence as to an investigation to determine whether or not it should be removed or shouldn't be removed? I mean, what I saw was so cursory. It was your view, which is yours, but there was no opportunity for Commissioner Crzyjak in a meaningful way to rebut what you said, and that troubled me. So how can that be due process?
It is allowed in the law. There's nothing that requires an extensive investigation process. In my mind, Commissioner Crzyjak's rebuttal and response was in that document. So, under the law, and please let me make this clear to everyone, I chose to do this in public. It was not a surprise to any of the elected officials that I chose that. In a memorandum that was given three weeks prior, I mentioned that I was considering doing it in a public setting. On the day that the agenda was printed and delivered, it did not say move into closed session and discuss the evaluation, it just said consideration of the evaluation. So, you know, there was nothing that was a surprise. But I will tell you this, that I, under the law, I can choose to do this in a public session. I cannot be denied. So regardless of how any of the five elected officials would counsel me or recommend to me that you not do this, and I'm not saying anyone did... me that you not do this, and I'm not saying anyone did, they could not prevent it. So I don't want them to be blamed for a choice I made.
I understand that you're right. I understand that. But how about the consideration of how that would look in terms of the city? Why not put it in closed session to air or dirty laundry privately? Would there be any...there would be a negative impact. There'd be a positive impact. Because it did look bad, did you watch it?
I absolutely watched it.
I mean, it...
I lived great.
It wasn't a good...
And I'm still living it.
Probably more because of that.
No. I am better off today because of it. And I will tell you that I made that choice after careful consideration. I have not worked here for all these years without...you can rest assured that I look out for the best interest of the city. And in doing that, I have to also look out for the best interest of me. I made that choice not based on simply the evaluation, but based on the last year and a half experience I've had. So make no mistake about, this was done for a reason. There was a reason I didn't go into a closed session to review this with the five bosses that I have. Because I know, in a closed session, nothing can ever be repeated. No one could ever know what was said in that room at that time. And my only opportunity to really discuss what was said in that evaluation was to do it in public and air it publicly. I had to. I can tell you for a year and...there are other circumstances and I felt like the only way to really make things better between the city commission and the commissioners, this was one of the opportunities that I took. And, you know, I know you disagree, and by law, we can't discuss my evaluation. And I respect your opinion and I appreciate you coming here tonight.
I just have one more comment. I don't need to...just one comment about how is it that you...how is it that raising the water bill in his personal financial instance and that one moment, that one late payment? How is that relevant?
And let's clarify, should we talk about one late payment or three times on the show?
Well, before we say anything further, do you want to talk about water bills and history? You do not, obviously. But this issue was not about a water bill. This issue was, in my mind, in my mind, which you pointed out so eloquently, my perception is my perception and you can't change that. In my mind, this was retaliation and that's why I mentioned it. Not for the purpose of discussing the water bill, which by the way, is public record and anyone, anywhere can request the records of elected officials or anybody else in the city. So I didn't air anything private. But this was not about one water bill. This was about, you are glowing in March and in May, you're failing this evaluation. And though there was one exceeds expectations, there were many, many unsatisfactory.
I believe there were four. But Mayor, may I say something?
Well, we discussed that two weeks ago.
Well, we...and we can't discuss that.
There were more. You can discuss this, the public can't discuss it.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, there was, in the memo that we received saying that we would...that you were possibly going to consider discussing your review, in no way, shape or form did we understand the scope of what you wanted to do with that. And, I mean, my concern is that it...I mean, it has hurt the city and it is not...it's not something we need to be discussing. We should be discussing, we should be discussing the budget right now. And we should be discussing...
In about three minutes, we will be.
And that's right.
But I think it is...I don't know. I think what the residents have expressed is just very thoughtful and deep concern. You know, when you do...we do have children in this community who watch these things, who are really interested in concern and like to learn about their government. But, you know, how Jason Krzyjak was depicted was just such a...it was so shocking to me because the picture that was painted of him, you know, was no way what he is. Jason Krzyjak, he is, he's Coach K for the T-ball team. And he, you know, and Jason Krzyjak may have been late to the city's volunteer dinner, but it's because his 11-year-old was...his hockey team went into a sudden death overtime. And while Jason may make mistakes here and there, he also has done exceptional things for the city. Jason has helped establish coffees with commissioners for more comfortable environment for citizens to be able to raise questions and express concerns. He's helped establish the playmakers to reach out for a growing number of families who have younger children, who, you know, which is where our city is moving. And he helped bring water rate issues forward as well as he took the lead on the human rights ordinance that was just adopted. And these are some examples of the good work Jason has done in a very brief amount of time.
Mayor, if I may, and I appreciate those comments, Ann. I've only known Jason for a little over a year and a half, so there are many good qualities about all of you and I would be the first to tell them. I think this was an excellent lesson in local government, anybody who's watching it. There was no anger coming from my statement. I never called him names or said anything. That was the right. I didn't...
Do you like that? Tell it loud enough?
About time.
It was used last month, too.
I didn't call him names nor did I say anything derogatory about his character, unlike what he did my character in his evaluation. All of that being said, I know it was uncomfortable at the end when I said I believe it was retaliation. To this day, I believe it is retaliation, regardless of what you say or what you feel. And I don't think it harmed the city. I think the people here this evening, many of whom were invited by you, I think, yes, they're saying it harmed the city, but at last month's meeting, there was a very different kind of a feeling, so...
I'm sorry, that is not true.
If there's anything...
These people came from their own choice because these people are residents of our city. These people love our city.
I'm glad and I...
Exactly. And these people make the choice to come to these meetings when they have concerns and they...
Absolutely, and I think that's...
We have one more member of the public who acts as a check talk and she only has...
Oh, that's okay. I'm not very good at this. Although I seem to be doing it a lot more often. I'm not good at it. My name is Kate Rose and I live in Sandy Halsley and I am a neighbor of Jason's. And although I did not like watching, I watched, I didn't like it. And part of me was, you know, listening to the review and I found myself saying, oh, Jason, that's a good person, blah, blah, blah. I didn't agree with everything you had said, but Sherry would...for the water bill card it kind of, you know, it pained me to watch. But that's...so it was just painful. But like everything else in life, I think we're going through a lesson where it's good, all these people are here and we're all talking about this because we're, it's the elephant in the room. And the thing that will come out of this is, you know, you guys all volunteer. We pay nothing to do this. And Sherry, I believe you pay. I know, and I've seen firsthand, that people aren't always nice to you, you know? And I think, you know, I've mentioned that to you. So it's like, but we're all part of the city and we can't be defined by this one moment. We need to just talk about it and cast it. And, you know, I have my personal opinions on, you know, people say the fence, what side of the fence and stuff, but in reality, I think Ann said most openly, you know, this is the city we love and, you know, we either are going to march forward down the lane or we're going to just stay in the mud here. And I don't want to be with anyone.
Thank you.
Just a couple of minutes. I understand we have, you know, business to attend to and I don't want to drag this out any more than it needs to. One thing I just want to be clear to everyone is that this whole water bill thing and the connection to my evaluation has really thrown me aback. The moment those words came out of Sherry's mouth, it was the first time those two separate ideas had even been connected in my mind. So it really, literally stunned me. Looking back, we all look back on events in our lives and not getting my water bill to Darren on time, I would have never thought that it would germinate into a situation that I was discussing at City Commission. But we were, we were getting ready to go to Flori...this is the background. We were getting ready to go to Florida to visit my family. We had a pile of bills. We put the kids in the car, we put the...we were gonna...I was gonna bring the bill over here. It was early morning, we loaded the car, we're getting ready to go down to visit family in Florida. We were to Ohio before I even realized that we had forgot to drop off the water bill. It being Easter weekend, the possibility of it not arriving on time suddenly became very apparent to me. The payment arrived on Tuesday. Darren Humph, you know, our water clerk had already sent out the notices that we were facing shut-off notice. I was concerned, you know, that, you know, we were going to get our water shut off. We were out of town for that entire week. Our water was shut off, Darren received the payment and our water was turned back on. Really, if Darren hadn't sent notice of those actions and if a concerned neighbor hadn't texted my wife and I that there was a big orange marker on my door, I would have never known that we had had our water shut off. It was not an inconvenience to me or my family at all. By the time we got home, we were all able to bathe and wash our clothes and recover from our vacation. I was, we were not inconvenienced at all. So the accusation that this is what spurred me into avengful rage, I think, is very spurious and I just don't see how it connects. I acknowledge that Sherry can have her perceptions and those are her perceptions. I feel like she put those two independent historical events and connected them for whatever reason, I don't know. I do feel like what happened at the commission meeting last month could have been handled in a closed session. It could have been something that we could have discussed openly. My understanding is we could have even voted on it, just as we had voted in May. If my colleagues felt like it was unfair, the same vote could have been taken in closed session and this episode would not have blown up into something that, you know, I really feel is unfortunate for everyone. I am disappointed that it was brought out in the public and those connections were made. I was disappointed that Mayor Castelli participated in prosecuting what I felt was conjecture and two events that, in my mind, had no relevance, but he proceeded to put those together and build a case against me. And I regret that my colleagues voted to expunge it from the record because no matter how we may agree or disagree on things, I would never vote to have somebody's voice silenced like that. So I do want to go on. I echo everyone's sentiment that we should be able to go on from this. And one thing I do want to make clear is that, because one thing that was really, that really affected me, because it's not why I volunteered to do this, this accusation that I'm purposefully dividing the city or I'm purposefully, you know, dividing east side and west side or I have a mission to destroy the fabric of the city, this is the absolute opposite of why I devote my time to this. And everyone on this table, I have full confidence, has the same attitude as to why they do this. If there are residents out there who feel that I am in the wrong, I definitely want to engage in a conversation. Please email me, please stop me, please converse. I'm welcome that conversation. I feel that will be beneficial to me to learn. I'm learning. I learned a lot last month. I continue to try and learn and I will continue to do that. One thing, I'll just leave this subject. The job that Sherry does is a very tough one. The job that we've all chosen to volunteer to do has its difficult moments. But what really makes Pleasant Ridge is the residents of the city. And my actions or Sherry's actions or the mayor's actions should not be allowed to tear at that fabric. What you do and your actions towards each other, your acts of kindness towards each other, your neighborliness towards each other, that is what makes Pleasant Ridge what it is. And I would hate if my actions or anybody's actions as an elected official would dissuade anyone from continuing to do that. So, thank you.
Next item is consideration of a supplemental appropriations, page 2013-005 through 008. I believe that's Molly.
That will be Molly Goji, the city's financial consultant, yes. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Hello. Well, yes, so we have, you have in front of you the last of our fiscal year 2013 budget amendments. So again, the budget is created at the beginning of fiscal year and often should be updated as necessary throughout the year to make sure that we are keeping an eye on where the numbers are going, how our revenues, what our expenses are doing. And so you have in front of you our last amendments for the fiscal year. You have two different types of amendments, a supplemental for those and a transfer. The difference being a supplemental appropriation is requesting overall change to fund balance in a fund, whether we're requesting budget amendments that will increase or decrease the fund balance in that fund. The transfer appropriation is just moving between lines, there'll be no overall effect to fund balance in a fund. So the first and the most lengthy will be that of the general fund. Again, it's the city's biggest fund, it has majority of the operations of the city flowing through it. I won't go through every line since it is three or four pages. But the end result is these amendments are requesting a use of fund balance to increase in the fund balance of the general fund by about $39,000. I can tell you there have been several significant factors that contribute to that. The one is, we had an employee who has previously been not on the city insurance due to changes in their personnel status. Personal status, they are now included on the city's insurance, I believe in a double policy, not just a single, so that was an added expense that was not part of the original budget last year when the budget was created. Secondly, we did have a very senior police officer taken early retirement and in accordance with their union agreement, they are allowed a payout of any accumulated taken vacation time, a large payment that was not anticipated again at the time the budget was originally created. And lastly, in the last couple of months, the city's technology server went down, which was an amazing time getting that backup running. And so there were some significant technology-related costs that had to be very quickly factored in so that we could get that server backup running so the city could keep running as it always has. So the three of those together are almost $35,000 to $39,000 that these amendments would request use of fund balance for, again, regarding the general fund.
Molly, prior year, was an increase in fund balance of over $100,000?
Prior year, yes. And the year before that, I believe it was about $13,000 or $15,000 increase. So unfortunately, things do happen and, but overall, these are things that were completely unexpected and were not part of the original budget. And we need to make sure that we are properly amending the budget to incorporate them.
And then the other items?
The other items, the local street fund, you guys have taken care, you know, after the last...now we have a... we're gonna keep these, now we have a, uh, accurate picture of the cost. We wanna make sure that we're updating those line items as well as moving a couple of things, um, just some more house cleaning type items. The last two are, um, connected. The, um, the pool fund has been, had some major repair and maintenance items during the year and therefore is needing, um, some additional funding from another fund. And so these last two amendments would be requesting a transfer from the segregated capital asset fund into the pool operating fund to help cover some of those unexpected costs that the pool operating fund is not able to absorb on the run.
Well, that's a transfer of interest.
That's a transfer of the community's interest.
And at the top of the list of things we would spend interest for is recreation.
Recreation, yep. And the last being the transfer appropriation, again, this is very minor, um, related to the infrastructure improvement fund. So again, the tax monies from the infrastructure millage come in and they go out to help fund the local street project. Just making sure that the numbers all tie out now that tax settlement is over and done with. We know what our final tax revenues were in that fund and all amounts have been transferred out to the local street fund to pay for the project.
Questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move the supplemental appropriation, A 2013-05 to A 2013-08. Be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Let me take a vote.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Derry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next is a transfer appropriation.
That was the last one, I remember regarding the tax settlement. Yeah, sorry, I rolled into Molly one.
Okay, so is there a motion on the transfer appropriation?
Mayor, I move that the transfer appropriations, number A 2013-001, be approved and recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Let me take a vote.
Commissioner Derry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next, I have a public hearing, solicitation of public comments on the 2013-14 combined city budget, proposed 2014 military rates, and the 2014 through 18 five-year capital improvement, Scott.
Well, Mayor, this evening, I was gonna introduce the, the assistant manager who has prepared a, um, brief PowerPoint presentation. I think it explains the budget a little bit easier and something that Scott certainly enjoys doing. Wanted to give him the opportunity to, um, present the budget solo this year with assistance from this boy, Scott.
All right, good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner, residents in attendance. I just wanna give a quick overview on the 2013-2014 budget that we will, um, be looking at to approve this evening. So, uh, we did just have a couple, uh, slides to go forward through here just to kind of go over some of those highlights. I'm just sorry if I'm in the way, you know, trying to move. I just be able to still skip through. Okay. So, um, a- as we, as we move forward into the next year, uh, the economy looks like it's finally starting to improve, um, a little bit here. Oh, I can just hold it, that's fine. Um, so we've seen a tactical value increase of about 2.48% for the next, um, upcoming fiscal year. It's better than not going up at all, like many communities in Oakland County has, have done. Uh, last year, we went up around 1%. We were one of, uh, the only cities in Oakland County to do that. Um, this can be attributed to the work the City Commission has done to keep city services and amenities at a high level while decreasing costs by collaborating with other cities, employee pay freezes, aggressive contract negotiation, and, uh, general sound fiscal management. As far as revenue goes, our, our revenue stream has remained stable. Our revenue stream has been roughly the same for, uh, the past few budget years. Our largest, um, revenue stream is property taxes. And from on, from there, we go to, um, state shared revenue. Interest income, which I will touch a little bit on in, in the presentation, uh, is at an all-time low. It's something that really is, is overlooked a lot of times when we talk about budgets and, and revenue. And then, uh, state shared revenue has, uh, increased actually. The last two fiscal years, a small amount, but it has, it has gone up. And this is partly due to, uh, the city aggressively completing its three EVIP requirements, which is the Economic Vitality Incentive Program. Those three categories are accountability and transparency, consolidation of services, and employee compensation. City must, uh, submit a certification form with, uh, required attachments for each category to qualify for these, uh, these payments. And some of these reports are lengthy and, uh, do take, do take some time.
I can you contrast, uh, tax value increase compared to the SEV increase that the city experienced? And the SEV increase was more than twice that amount?
Yeah, yeah, SEV, SEV was, I, I think roughly around six percent. Six, five to six percent, yeah. So, um, we have, we've submitted all of our categories ahead of schedule on EVIP and have received a number of complimentary emails from Treasury about the format and the content of the reports. So those are always nice, uh, nice to see. So, um, as, as we, as we talk about the budget, we, there's, uh, four things that the, the city focuses on for a budget philosophy. Uh, that's, uh, cash solvency, budget solvency, long-range solvency, and service delivery solvency. And all of these have, uh, have their own definitions there. The city really focuses on these items as we, uh, put, put together the budget for, uh, the upcoming year. Um, you know, cash solvency being important of having adequate money on hand to pay your expenses. You wanna be able to make payroll and you wanna be able to pay the bills that they, as they come in and not have to worry about, uh, possibly collecting, collecting those money from taxes, especially since we, we accept our summer tax payment, which is our largest one in eighteen. And so we are not receiving, you know, uh, 1.3 million dollars in July. We receive that money over the, the period of the year. So we definitely have to have the cash on hand to be able to pay those bills. Um, budget solvency, just to be able to, uh, have an accurate budget so you know what, you know what you're working with. Long-range goals and solvency is, uh, municipality having the tools to finance the services on a perennial basis, being able to, you know, survive since nineteen twenty-eight and be able to go, uh, go move forward, uh, for the next hundred years.
Scott, on that topic, can you comment on where we are, legacy costs versus?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, our, our legacy costs, we have, uh, the city has really been aggressive on, uh, controlling those. And when I say legacy costs would be, um, retirement, uh, and post, uh, post-retirement benefits, healthcare, and, uh, retirement system. So there's no, all new hirees now will no longer have, uh, the plans that some, some of the existing hirees that were hired many years ago. There's no more, uh, no more healthcare after retirement. And the retirement plans have been, um, severely cut. And actually, the employees are paying a portion of those now. And I, I believe, I, I'm not a hundred percent on the number. I think we only have either five or six people left on our, on our, our payroll for those post-benefit healthcare. Um, actually, we just, I think we just recently lost one, um, here in the last couple of weeks. But there is only five or six, and really, I'm the last person, and I'm starting to freak up in age now, I hate to say that on camera, um, that will have, have any of those benefits. All the new hires after that will, um, no longer receive any of those benefits. So, um, our legacy costs are controlled partly, and part of that is because we had, no longer have the DPW department that are city employees. They are, it's a contracted service. So that was, that was always, you know, five to six employees right there, plus their, plus their spouses that would have had that coverage, and that is, that is no longer out there. So our, you know, in, in a short, a short timeframe, those, basically those legacy costs will be essentially gone.
And as a demonstration of how long that tale can be, the person who recently passed away was a hundred.
Yes, he was a hundred years old, so I can go.
Cause he has good healthcare.
Exactly. Uh, okay, I was gonna, uh, I wanted to touch a little bit on, uh, can everybody see if I stand right here? You guys up there see?
No.
Oh, you can't be on the camera. On, uh, historic interest rates. This slide is actually, uh, interest rates that, uh, that the Federal Reserve sets as a benchmark interest rate. Uh, usually the central bank interest rate is the overnight rate at which central banks make loans to the commercial banks under the jurisdiction. This is the rate that you see on TV, this is the rate that everybody understands. Um, as you can see, this goes from, uh, from nineteen seventy-four all the way to present. And at its highest point in December of nineteen eighty, it was at 20%. And now we're at 0.25%. So this is a, I mean, it's a huge, it's a huge cut to the, the interest revenue that we, we've used to, uh, help build roads and help fund some recreation type programs in the city. And our interest rate that we get is, is higher than 0.25%. Like I said, this is the overnight rate, but these are all, all the rates are, you know, somewhat connected. So it's just, uh, it's a crazy, it's a crazy, crazy number to really see and to think how it, uh, how we will afford. Um, thank you. Our next one is our, our interest, our interest revenue. And I picked this as a greater capital assets fund because that's our largest, uh, interest generator for the city. And you can see from '05 to '06 to now, uh, how much the interest rate has gone down. In, um, '06, '07, we were earning a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars a year in interest. And now, uh, we're at forty-two thousand. So if we were to keep those rates as they were in '07 and, and project it out, we've lost over five hundred thousand dollars of income in the last, uh, was that six years, seven years? And that's enough to, um, that's enough to do a whole construction project, a city road project. So it's been, uh, it's a significant cut to interest rates and our ability to, um, to provide those, those construction and recreation services that we use that money for. Uh, next, we, uh, talk about state shared revenue. And I touched about it a little bit in the, uh, in the opening there, but the state shared revenue is our second largest funding source. And, uh, this year, it's expected to be about two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. And, um, and that's about nine percent of our general fund, general fund revenue. And, uh, 2001, that number was three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. So it's been, uh, it's a significant cut there. And at that time, it was eighteen percent of general fund revenue. Uh, if we, if we compound that, that loss out over those last thirteen years, it's about, uh, 1.3 million dollars lost from state shared revenue. So this is another, uh, I mean, this is money that just is never gonna come back. Uh, I, like I said, we've realized some small increases the last couple of years. You can see we were at, uh, 212 in 2011, and now we'll be at approximately 232. And that's if sales tax ends up coming out the way, uh, we hope it will, and Treasury hopes it will. So it's, it, it definitely makes it difficult to, uh, to, to move forward without that large, uh, large source of income that we, we used to realize. Next is, uh, our 2013-14 expenditures by department. And as you can see, the largest, the largest ones are here, and that being, uh, the police department, parks and recreation, fire and rescue, those are our three largest, uh, funds. And, uh, the police department is at thirty-two percent of the general fund money on paid for police service, and then followed by recreation at fifteen percent, and then fire protection at ten. If you look at, um, the fire services, they are, continue to be provided by the city of Ferndale, and that cost represents approximately a five percent decrease, uh, over what we're paying right now. This is largely due to the city negotiating a new fire contract that brought the cost down from over four-hundred thousand dollars in 2010 to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for fiscal year thirteen fourteen. So there's a significant savings with that new contract. Uh, our, our total public safety, which is police and fire, constitute forty percent, forty-two percent of, uh, our, our general fund. The next slide is trying to show you how, how that compares to some of our neighboring communities. You can see, um, this is the percentage of, of general fund for public safety, police and fire together. Berkeley at forty percent, Pleasant Ridge forty-two, Hines and Woods forty-seven. Uh, now we jumped to some larger numbers. Ferndale at sixty-one percent, and Royal Oak at eighty-seven percent of their general fund operating dollars paid for police and fire. So, um, those, those numbers for Royal Oak are staggering. When you look at their, I believe it was thirty-two million dollar general fund budget and twenty-six million dollars goes to police and fire. It's a wonder that they're able to operate. Their large commercial base does, uh, does help out with that, uh. If you, if you look at a lot of, if you look at a lot of other cities, it, this number is, um, this number typically is over fifty percent. Just personnel for police and fire, staffing, it's, it's expensive. And then, um, you know, anytime you have union, the union contracts involved and then, um, guaranteed staffing for some of those agencies, it really, um, it really can put, put, I, I don't wanna say a burden on the general fund, but, um, really at eighty-seven percent, that, I guess you could call eighty-seven percent a burden on the general fund. That is a large, that is a large percentage. So, um, we are fortunate to be at, uh, the forty-two percent. And, uh, that's partly due to, um, having that, the Ferndale fire contract that was reduced. And our, um, our officers have, uh, taken pay freezes over the last few years. And, um, they, they do a nice job. So we'll move on next to, uh, the proposed millage levy for thirteen fourteen. And, uh, this is the millage that is, uh, levied by the city. The general operating at eleven point four-two, infrastructure at two point four, rubbish at one point seven, pool operating at one point two, the library at point three-seven, and the wellness center and pool, uh, bonds, the debt, at one point three. The only number that went up this year is that pool wellness center. It was at one point oh, and it has gone up to one point three. That is a, a general obligation, unlimited millage amount, which means that the city has the ability, uh, that was approved by voters in 2004, to levy whatever it needs to be able to cover the, the cost of the, that payment toward the bonds. Um, and this year, it is, if we were using, uh, some fund balance that was in that account to pay it down, we, we had to get, to get that fund balance number down. And now we're at a, a point where the funds are, have equaled out and it needed to be raised to one point three. So that's, uh, that was the only, the only increase out of any of those funds. The rest of the, the rest of the millage levies are at their cap for the headle, the headle cap. So actually, general operating, if we didn't have a, if we didn't have the headle cap, would be able to levy up to twenty, infrastructure up to three, rubbish up to three, the pool wellness up to one point three, and the library is at point five. But we only need to levy the point three-seven to be able to pay that, that amount. So that's, that's where we are with our millage levy. Next is our mil, a millage levy comparison to some of, uh, the other neighboring communities. Uh, Pleasant Ridge, uh, few sound, uh, financial planning and, uh, solid housing stock that we've, we've experienced the last few years and, uh, collaboration with other cities. And our, um, our solid budget philosophy has been able to maintain a low millage rate for the past, uh, basically two decades at least. And as you can see by the chart, there are only two neighboring cities with a lower millage rate than Pleasant Ridge. Uh, and to be fair to us, uh, Royal Oak and Birmingham really have a large commercial, uh, tax base that we do not have the, we do not have that, uh, that base, that tax base to be able to help we, uh, pay some of those bills. So the majority are, I would say ninety-nine percent of our, uh, our tax base is homes, you know, regular, just houses. So we are at, uh, eighteen point four-nine-two-eight for the upcoming year. And as you can see, uh, at the top, it was Oak Park at twenty-nine point three. So some of those numbers are pretty staggering when you look at them, um, based on all of Oakland County. Next, we will talk about our other funds. These are all the other funds that, um, are not the general fund. So these are, uh, the, the pool operating, the pool debt, water sewer, debt service, library, DDA, and, uh, the, the rest are listed here, local major streets, uh, dog run. Uh, the Water and Sewer Fund is the largest of these special revenue funds. Uh, just an explanation on that fund, the Water and Sewer Fund is an enterprise fund. This means that the fund is financed and operated in a manner similar to a private enterprise. The intent is that costs, uh, expenses, including depreciation of providing water and sewer to the general public are recovered through user charges. A combined rate is, uh, recommended to increase from, uh, one-twenty-one, um, per cubic foot to, uh, one-twenty-five to pay for that. And that is, uh, the smallest, uh, it's a three percent increase. That's the smallest increase that we've, uh, seen in several years. Along with that, uh, refuse, it's on their solid waste. It's another large, uh, large, uh, piece of the pie that pays for, uh, curbside. It's another large, large piece of the pie that pays for curbside leaf collection, recycling, and your, your rubbish disposal. As those, those costs increase as we, as we move forward, there's a two percent increase on the quarterly, quarterly water, water bill charge on that, that part of the water bill, from, I think it's forty-two fifty-one, forty-two fifty-one to forty-three thirty-six, so eighty-some cents. And also included in the water, the water fund is the George W. Akun Drain Bonds, and the debt service on that is a hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars that, that is paid out of that fund and the user charges. So that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions from the commission or anybody who's...
Scott?
Yes.
Please, you have to come to the mic.
I'm sorry. Here, let's turn this back around here for you.
David Stone, fourteen, Norwich. I just had a question with regards to the Water and Sewer. Is that included in that, is when there's the construction on the streets, there are expenses to Water and Sewer at that time also with those costs? And I always had the question, is there a change in the Water and Sewer systems with each street that's repaid? How does that work in?
What, as we look at every street that is constructed, the city's engineers go out on that street, and we televise and clean the sewers and look at that, and then at that time, they're able to determine if any major repairs need to be done or any replacements. So there are some, there are some charges that do get charged to the Water and Sewer Fund from that as part of upkeep and maintenance to the, to the system. It's, it's a funny number to look at because it changes your depreciation, but the more money you spend in the system, it changes your depreciation number. So it's, it's kind of hard to give like an exact figure, but we do budget money in that fund to be able to do system, system maintenance, system repairs, yes.
Also, I think going forward, the infrastructure millage expires in two years. There's going to be a proposal on the ballot in November, assuming the Attorney General approves the language to renew that for another twenty years at the rate we started from. Conservatively, when the road plan was adopted, interest was pegged to never be lower than seven percent. So the marrying of the SCAP fund interest in the, in the millage hasn't worked out as well as we all hoped before the world changed. So there will still be some street work that needs to be done at the end of that twenty years that simply haven't been able to do during the first twenty. But then the ballot language will be broad enough to then allow that millage to fund other infrastructure programs through the city. And, and part of, of that proposal also is to come up with a comprehensive sidewalk program so that we have millages that will provide for sidewalk recurrent replacement as opposed to having to dig the individual homeowner who's unquestioned enough to have the concrete for the house. And that's something that'll be in the ballot survey. Scott?
I, just if there's any other questions about the budget from the commission or...
About the budgets as a whole that we're talking about?
I would say...
Do you have all budget questions now? Okay.
Do you want to go over the five-year capital plan quickly first, or should we get all the questions at one time?
Again, again, yep. So the city prepares a five-year capital improvement program that helps us kind of foresee the future, and some of the projects are projects that we would, you know, hope to be able to do in the next five years. Some of them are projects that we know need to be done in the next five years. So we, we were able to put those plans together and kind of have a framework of some things that we wanted to, want to look at accomplishing over the next, next few years. So there's a, there's a number of categories from general government, police, recreation, pool, roads, water and sewer, that all have a capital improvement line items. Things like general government are for computers and upgrades to City Hall, things like that that we have spread out over into the future, you know, paint, carpet, things like that, just natural wear and tear that happens to buildings as they age. The police have an existing payment on, on the new patrol vehicle, and then over the next few years, they have new in-car video systems, Kevlar vests for bulletproof, bulletproofing, new firearms out in a few years, just general things that they need for operation. Recreation, we have everything from upkeep of the building, park improvements, playground resurfacing, general, general large items that need to be done over the next five years as we look, look forward to the future of recreation.
Can you touch on the proposed millage rates?
The millage rates that...
Are proposed.
Are proposed for the, the one coming up in November?
No, the millage rates to be adopted on tonight to draw on the bill support.
Sure. The millage rate, like I said in the presentation, is, is set to be the same except for a point-three increase to the pool and wellness center debt that is needed to cover those bonds, and that's a general obligation, unlimited bond. So the city is able to levy whatever they need to cover those payments. Other than that, all the rest of the accounts stay the same. We were not rolled back by headlies being as our, our housing increase was, was so small that we didn't, we didn't receive a rollback. But I would suspect that's, that's a possibility for the future if we happen to see a, a larger increase in our, our housing stock. What happens is the headly amendment kicks in, and they actually roll back the amount that you're allowed to levy. So you're not, you're only still allowed to collect a certain amount of taxes, no matter if your housing stock exploded next year and went up thirty percent, you're going to get rolled back, you know, probably twenty-seven percent. So you're really not, you're not seeing a large increase over that rate of inflation. So that's for the, the millage levy for the upcoming year.
Who should answer your question?
Now, on the five-year, the capital improvement plan, like right now, we still have it, I was starting to look at this because, you know, we have the delay in the Cambridge Street construction next year. So I was looking, and we, in the budget, we still have the streets a little bit out of order. We have Oxford for this year. If you look at the fact, I don't have the page numbers online, and, and then Cambridge in Norwich, is that just out of order, or is that intentional?
What, what's going to end up having in is, is Cambridge is going to be partly done in this fiscal year and the next.
Paid for or constructed?
Constructed and paid for. So that when they start construction next June, that will still be in this fiscal year, but they'll continue on through July, so part will be in the next fiscal year also. And then after that, they will continue with Oxford, continue on with Oxford, based on the amount of money that's available. So this actually was, these actually were printed before we knew that, that construction possibly was going to change. So I'll have to flip-flop those numbers for the final amount and get them both in the same budget year.
Okay.
They were, it looks like they were imposed.
Now, as I was starting to look around with this, I saw that after the first budget rendition, we started a new fund, like Fund 401, called its Capital Projects. Now, what is that about?
The Capital Projects Fund is, is set up for the road project, which allows you to actually have the, the fund can, doesn't necessarily go by what the fiscal year is, it goes by what the project, the length of the project. So you're actually able to use a couple of years' worth of infrastructure money for the one project, and it doesn't, it doesn't hurt your, your timing on your fiscal year starting July one. So we, we set up the Capital Project Fund because Cambridge, West Cambridge is such a large project at six-hundred thousand dollars with, with all the alternates that we needed to, we needed to spread that out over the two budget, the budget years. So we, we set up that Capital Project Fund, which will be shown in the budgets.
Okay, so go ahead.
It's just, it's a little bit more reflective of what's going to happen with the project because it is a little... Oh, sorry. It's a little more reflective of what the new project is going to be as opposed to it being a one-year fiscal activity. It's going to cross over several. So the way the Capital Project Fund, as Scott mentioned, it's, it's more of the life of a project versus the fiscal year.
And the local street has to be just that fiscal year?
Local streets is a special revenue fund. It's based on a fiscal year.
Based on fiscal year.
Yeah. So because this project was a little different, and it's going to cross the two years, this, the use of a Capital Project Fund gives you a little bit more, it's a more reflective picture essentially of what the project's going to be.
Is this basically a carryover fund?
Yeah.
So with that, so like it reflects, like the, the, the infrastructure has moved six-hundred thousand dollars.
That would be the two years of tax levy. So you'll have the upcoming two thousand and thirteen tax levy and the two thousand and fourteen tax levy because the project's going to start then, the beginning of next summer, in the end of our thir...
Fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the end of the thirteen tax collection year, and it's going to wrap up at the end of the summer, which will be the beginning of that fourteen tax collection year.
Okay, so you're going to, we're going to get like two different transfers in from infrastructure for that, that, like we don't see right now going out to it.
Right, because the other funds are all based on a fiscal year. They're a one-year. The Capital Project is, here's, here's the beginning of the project, and here's the end of the project. This is what's going to happen over the entire life of the project, not just in the one fiscal year.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Other questions?
Mayor Fickel?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, there's a question here, or, Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Brett Scott, six, Devonshire. Just a question on the budgeting. Are they able to approve the deficit generated on paper?
We don't approve it.
So we're showing a six-hundred-thousand-dollar amount on the 401 budget, which isn't balanced by other accounts because the money is expected to come in a future calendar year or a future budget year. If you can't approve two thousand and fourteen expenditures today, and yet the budget shows that three-hundred thousand dollars extra.
The Capital Project Fund actually functioned a little bit different than a general fund or a special revenue. They're not part of the State Budget Act, so they have a little bit different rules. And so they can straddle a couple of different fiscal years. They will, we still will have to probably do a budget deficit elimination plan at the end of the year, depending on, you know, how the money flows and the project wraps up. We will still probably have to file one, and the explanation would be that we have, you know, the modeling tax collection year funds to come in and cover that. So, but you can still budget it a little bit differently tonight than you can with other funds because it doesn't follow the Budget Act exactly like that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brizzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just, in the recreation, five-year capital improvement, I know Scott talked about building maintenance for community center, and these projects are all defined, two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and eighteen. If approved, could these projects be amended to include other things? I mean, I know the paint and the flooring at the community center are in need of repair, but I'm also concerned about other maintenance items at the community center. Could these be amended over the course of the five-year improvement plan?
Yes. And basically, we, we put these in there to show that we have some maintenance items that we need to do, and there's also a line item in the regular recreation budget in the general fund for maintenance and repairs to the building or the structure.
Think of the most current year as that you're doing granite. The fifth year is kind of traced in sand.
Okay.
And everywhere in between, we have historically juggled things or substituted things as needs arise. But you got to start with a plan, and then change the plan.
Yeah, the only thing I would say to the plan, and I appreciate that, Mayor, is that I have had some residents, and my wife teaches yoga there, you know, and they spend a lot of time looking at the floor, and there's been some concern about the roof at the community center. I know we've discussed this in the recreation meeting, and I would like to see long-term us have a plan to address those infrastructure issues at, at the community center.
For, for that, there was, we, the one small leak that we had on there is being created by an air conditioning unit that was, that's up on the roof, and we just had a heating and cooling was out there today.
Oh, okay.
So they are investigating that to see exactly where that, where that unit is leaking that. So that's being looked at as, as we speak.
But as the mayor said, over the course of this five-year improvement plan, if things develop that do need attention at, at Fort Ridge, they could be addressed out of this fund.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. With the, now with the roads, though, if, because, you know, we know that Cambridge project and all the other projects that went along with it, it is just under, like it's right around six-hundred thousand dollars. So if it, you know, regardless of if it goes forward this year or next year, and we're doing Oxford too, where does the additional funds, where do the additional funds come from? Because like the infrastructure fund is bringing in like three-hundred thousand a year at this point.
Correct. So we have, we have the two budget years to be able to collect that, and as the mayor spoke to earlier, that we have a, we have the renewal of the infrastructure millage coming up. So we just, we will just keep, we keep straddling those on that capital project with those capital projects.
The additional things that we use are the interest from the segregated capital asset fund, local roads, major roads, and, you know, the categorization of that street.
Right, it's, it's not all coming from...
It's not all infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I would like to, Mayor, if I may, after you...
Public care.
It's just to offer a special thanks this year to both Mr. Peter Zach and Boyke. There were some last-minute changes because of the issue that arose with the contractor on Cambridge that required quite a bit of work in, in the last minute, and really, they both did a terrific job this year. So thank you to them.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Mr. Mayor, move that two thousand, two thousand and fourteen...
Thirteen, fourteen.
Sorry, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, combined city budgets, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and seventeen, five-year capital improvement plan be approved, and that the budget resolution be adopted, including delivering of eleven-point-four-two, forty mils for the general fund operating, two-point-four-one-two-four mils for infrastructure improvements, one-point-seven-one-three-four mils for solid waste and disposal, point-three-seven mils for library services, one-point-two-seven-two-two mils for community service complex operations, and one-point-three mils for community center complex debt service be approved as recommended.
I'm not going to solicit a second yet, just give me a break.
Sure.
Should that have been seventeen, or should that have been eighteen in the capital improvement plan? Do you have a friendly amendment, Frank, to make that two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and eighteen?
Yep, two thousand and eighteen.
It's not even an amendment at this point because it wasn't checked.
Just a correction.
One second. Okay, as corrected, is there support?
Support.
Can I take a vote?
Ms. Navina?
Yes.
Ms. Bushy?
Yes.
Ms. Brizziak?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Pistola?
Yes, motion carries. Next, item is public caring, solicitation of public comments on Nord Nester Men and Sexy Sunny Court, that's one-eight-three. Combined water and sewer rates of Jefferson and Corey Utilities of Pleasant Ridge City Code, who's handling this one?
That would be Mr. Peter Zach and Ms. Boyke.
Okay, the next item is for the water rate ordinance. The City Commission talked about this at a budget workshop for the rates for the upcoming year. The attached ordinance includes a proposed water and sewer rates for the next year. Represents a three percent increase over the existing rate, and this increase is needed to cover an anticipated eight percent increase from the Oakland County Drain Commission and a two percent increase from the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority. Payment of the principal on the George W. Akun Drain Project and allow, and to allow for sufficient funds for future water and sewer replacement and repairs. It's important that the profit or loss of a water system is very much dependent on the weather. During a wet summer, revenues will decrease, as, as will our variable costs, but fixed costs, which are sixty-two percent of the water and sewer budget, remain the same. The rate was calculated to make a slight profit that will yield for the wet, the wet year or a large profit in a dry year, which also adds to the fund balance, which we all know that if we have a major water main break or a major problem, that, that fund balance will be gone overnight because it's, a, a large water main is, is very expensive to replace and fix. to replace and, and fix. Um, I, I like to say that when, when you have a problem with Detroit Edison, they just have to climb up on a ladder and, uh, or on a bucket truck and, and fix their wire or their, their transformer, and we have a water problem, we have to dig a giant hole in the ground and replace concrete and replace a, what can be sometimes, uh, twenty-four inch pipes, up to, up to sixty-four inch pipes underneath the ground, so it, it is very costly if we have any of those type of, uh, type of repairs.
Is that a hope for the public hearing?
Brett Scott, Sixteventhyre, a general comment. Um, as we think about public hearings in the future, it makes sense to give a month of time to hear what you are hearing from the residents so that you may take the input into consideration and draw your opinion based on your own and also those of the citizens. Made that comment, and may I about the human rights ordinance? I'm, unfortunately, I was out of town, could not participate in that time, but it makes sense to me that as we plan forward for public hearings, we give residents an opportunity to speak in a way that will allow their input to be considered. Uh, specifically on the water bill, um, the rate plan that is suggested still, to me, doesn't make any sense. There are fixed costs and variable costs, and we're mixing the two, and we should mix the two. That's it. Thank you.
In November, there will be on it, on the ballot, assuming the attorney general approves the language, a proposed headley override. Uh, and part of the thought process there is to move some of the costs that are presently, uh, paid for by water rates to being paid for by tax. So your tax bill will go up, your water bill will go down, some of the, um, fixed charges already on the water bill, maybe they'll go substantially down or go away. Uh, whether you're a winner or a loser in that, um, equation will, you know, be on a house-by-house basis, but that will be coming up in, in a few short months, which would affect future budget years of improvement.
I, I have a question on that. Are we, is there gonna be a public meeting regarding that because?
Yes.
Okay, do you know when that's gonna be?
We haven't scheduled it yet, but-
Well, I will talk about it now.
Scott's preparing the, uh, the slides. Anything else on the water rates?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, my name's Phil Hartman, I'm from Thirty-One Oak Park Boulevard. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is apologize for the length of time I spoke last year on the water budget.
Oh, you need to really apologize.
I'm apologizing. I, I went back yesterday and was watching it, and I'm like, boy, I went, uh-uh, uh-uh, no. So it was painful for me to watch, so it must've been painful for you to listen to. Therefore, I have actually prepared a, a little statement of comments that, uh, that will take less than five minutes, and I'm gonna read them-
We're gonna probably slash.
I'm gonna read them rather than, than just speak. So, uh, to start with, I wanted to share a comment made by the Royal Oak City Manager in his transmitted letter to the Royal Oak Commission last year's budget. Uh, in that, discussing the water and sewer rates, uh, his comments were that for the first time in my Royal Oak career, there is not an increase in water and sewer rates. The water and sewer fund is in solid shape, and we can get by without an increase in July. This isn't because of any change in the fundamental problems we have talked about in the past. Water usage is still declining, and we still have enormous fixed costs. So the, the reason I read that is that I have been talking for a long time about the high costs that Pleasant Ridge residents face and how it is affecting consumption and decreased water usage, and I really don't feel like I've been getting a lot of, yes, that's the case. Uh, there was a point last year, I think, where you asked Sherry to look at water consumption levels over the years and report back to the commission, and I don't think that actually occurred. Uh, the other point, or another point I wanted to make is that last year I was quite surprised at the meeting that when, uh, people were asking about the increase in water rates, which was twelve percent, uh, that the city manager, assistant city manager, uh, the mayor and various commissioners, when they were asked about the twelve percent increase, talked about the need to set aside more money for repairs, which, uh, when you look at the budget, it turned out to be just about two percent of the twelve percent cost. Uh, they asked about, or had mentioned the increased water and sewer costs from the city of Detroit, which when you look at the budget, turns out to be less than one-half of one percent of the twelve percent. Uh, and to my surprise, they failed to mention the two main areas causing the increase. The first area is the direct result of the county increasing our city billing for the stormwater runoff last year by fifty thousand dollars. That fifty thousand dollars resulted in four percent of the increase of the twelve, or a third of the increase. And the second area that didn't get mentioned, which gets right back to the decreased consumption, is that based on the city administration determining that we were gonna see a decrease in consumption from eleven thousand units down to ten thousand, excuse me, two hundred units, uh, that actually spread the larger fixed cost over a smaller amount of water purchases, and that estimated decrease in consumption was actually responsible for half of the increase in the water budget, six percent of the increase. If the city had kept the forecast at eleven thousand units, our water bills would've only gone off last year by six percent and not by twelve percent. Uh, I do wanna say that I'm happy to see that a plurality of the city commission voted to offer the public some structural fixes this year with the headley override on the November ballot. Uh, now, when we look at winners and losers, we have to look at more than just one-year winners and losers, because over the past three years, residents in Pleasant Ridge have seen a forty percent increase in their water bills, which is a humongous increase in a time of no inflation. So we're all losers when we're seeing that type of water cost increase. You know, the small person is a loser, the large buyer is a loser. Uh, my involvement in this water came into place when I was, uh, listening to some of the older residents of the city who were living on a fixed income and were really painfully complaining about how much the water bill is affecting their finances, that it has exceeded their electric bills, exceeded their heating bills. You know, they can turn on one light in their house and, and get by on electric with very little electric bills, uh, but when it comes to water, we have a minimum water billing charge in the city of Pleasant Ridge. Now, for the small user, that minimum water charge is a hundred and nine dollars. When you look at other cities nearby, Beverly Hills has a thirty-nine dollar minimum, Fawcett has a thirty-five dollar minimum, Hazel Park has a twenty-four dollar minimum, Huntington Woods has a twelve dollar minimum, Lathrop has an eighty-two dollar, Oak Park Fifty-One, Royal Oak just a ten dollar minimum, and Troy a forty-five dollar minimum. So my point is that there are things that we can still change within the water budget to look at the people that have fixed expenses, to look at different situations. Uh, I'm hopeful that we will see those changes. Uh, from the headley override and the description that if we adopt the headley override, it will reduce X number of dollars from the cost of water, makes me believe that the rest of the fixed charges are going to remain as a usage charge versus moving any of those fixed charges out to the water meter charge or some sort of ready-to-serv charge. And I think that that still has to be done if we're gonna truly fix the water. We need to bring some of the water costs down even further for the thousand cubic feet. We need to look at reducing the minimum, and we need to look at moving some of the costs over to a fixed charge. And those are my only statements.
Can I give five more minutes? You got two minutes left over for next year?
No, we actually keep track of it.
Ah, no, I'm sorry, you only get four minutes. Anything else? Close the public, yep? I'm closing the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to address Mr. Scott's point about scheduling and ask, uh, our city manager and Molly, um, about the, uh, timeline of budget preparation. I know, um, the administration worked hard, and they worked hard every year to present this to the commission, um, but I am interested in maybe, uh, amending or adjusting the scheduling, um, and please, you know, inform me about the practicality, but if we could do maybe the public hearing portion of the budget presentation a month earlier than adoption, would that, um, put an undue hardship on preparation of the budget?
The, um, the process and procedure for the budget is in the city code, city charter. It's established that way, and so there are deadlines that we have to meet. The public hearing is advertised, um, immediately following the May meeting, and any document that the city has at that point is available to the public that says that in the ad.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as moving it up, you know, we would love nothing better. The likelihood of that, probably not so much. It's just, there's a lot of information for a couple people to pull together. Um, and we have to start, as it is now, we start in January, so, uh, best efforts could be made to at least try to get something prepared a month ahead of time, but it would be good.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that feedback for sure. I just know, um, as a resident and as a commissioner now, um, you know, a public hearing in the purest sense of the word would, would help convey some of the public's concerns into the decision of the governing body, right? And, um, I think if the, uh, public was able to introduce their concerns or, or questions, uh, early enough, that would give us as a governing body an opportunity to ingest those suggestions, consider them fully, and then confidently vote on approval of the budget.
Well, remember, at the May meeting, a draft of the budget was included in the packet, so there's been at least a month.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that, we have to do that because anytime we're ready to introduce a public hearing, whether it's an ordinance or a budget, you have to have the draft available for the, um, I have to have it available for you to review, so it's absolutely available a month ahead of time.
Okay.
Now, this, I'm sorry, Commissioner Perry. This budget, actually, we did have to change it because of the contractor for Cambridge, but other than that, it's essentially the same.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes.
Um, I, I think the broader question is more having, you know, before, um, when we have public hearings, not having the vote immediately after them as on a consistent basis, not, it isn't just about the budget, but even about the human rights ordinance or about other things that are considered with a public hearing, so that the commission can then actually digest the information that the public has, has brought forward because, I mean, we are here to represent the public, and that way, you know, you never know what information will be brought forward, and having a month to, 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 to think about that information, I think would be very beneficial to the city.
Look, Commissioner Perry, um, I hope you don't include ZBA public hearings in that, like the ones you had today where we had to tell the sturds, wait a month before we vote, and while you can build in the garage, you can tell nobody was here to voice an opinion. Number one, number two, this one is the one that, you know, as we see there presently has a planned deadline, if we can get it done in June. Uh, nothing compels about, uh, after any other public hearing. People certainly could've felt free not to make the motion to adopt the human rights ordinance. At the meeting, it was on the agenda to put it over, uh, until the next month, but that's what people felt.
Well, and, okay, I mean, I did make that suggestion, and it had been suggested by a resident, and it wasn't just for his benefit, but it, um-
This one we have to vote tonight of the public hearing, though, but those, yes.
And I think that that happens so frequently on this, this stuff, is that, you know, it's with water and the budget and everything, so.
Right, just the point is made, though, this was available for a month as Brett wanted it to be, or, you know, that's a recommendation, but-
Well, I-
The point is well taken, that you're talking about, in general, public hearings, it may be better to have the public hearing one month and the issue the next.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sherry, I would remind you that one of the historic difficulties that any city manager in the city has had with respect to getting the budget done center is getting five of your nearest and duraest friends to agree to make themselves available for study sessions all at the same time. So if we're going to do it, I think what we need to do is to, um, set dates for those study sessions, well, in advance, and everybody gets etched in granite in their calendars, and if five people can make it, five people can make it, if four people can make it, and someone wants to fall in, so be it. Um, but there have, for years and years, been scheduling difficulties that way. Secondly, I don't know that, um, well, it might not meet the niceties of being the public hearing we need to have, and so therefore we might still need to have a separate public hearing out of the budget. Um, I don't know why we couldn't have some sort of presentation like Scott and Molly gave tonight, you know, at the point in time in which the draft budget is presented for, um, for scheduling the public hearing, if it's still the way it is. But it isn't all on the administration to get it done, with five of us up in the council to get a little meeting, so I think that's gonna be the goal. Think I closed the public hearing on this today?
Yes.
Is there a motion? We're at number eleven.
Okay, Your Honor, I move ordinance number four oh four regarding the combined water and sewer rig be adopted as recommended.
Support. Can we take a vote?
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Ravino?
Yes.
Ms. Bushy?
Yes.
Ms. Kryziak?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Sherry, next item is consideration of the agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and Oakland County Equalization for Assessing Services. Thank you, Molly. Effective July first, two thousand thirteen through June thirty, two thousand sixteen.
Yes, this contract expires, uh, June thirtieth of this year. It's, um, the contract that's before you this evening would be effective then July first of twenty thirteen, and would be effective for three years. Uh, the language is the same as in the previous years, and it has been reviewed by the city attorney. Uh, there is no proposed fee increase for this extension of the contract, for renewal of the contract, so it's my recommendation that the city commission approve the contract with Oakland County for assessing services for the next three years.
Is there such a motion?
Mayor, I move that the contract with Oakland County Equalization Division Assistant Services for Assessing Services effective July first, twenty thirteen through June thirtieth, twenty sixteen be approved, and the mayor, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney be authorized to sign the contract.
Is there a support?
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kryziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the bid bond for Tissio Brothers' aim for the West Cambridge Boulevard Road construction project. Sherry.
Mayor and city commission, uh, you have before you this evening an item that is related to the Cambridge Boulevard project. As you know, that project was awarded to Tissio Brothers, they were the lowest qualified bidder, um, and, um, due to very unfortunate circumstances, Tissio Brothers had to, um, pull out of the acceptance of the bid at the eleventh hour. What we did, the engineers and I contacted the second lowest qualified bidder who was Tissio contracting and asked if this was something that they could add to their schedule for this construction year, and they accepted that they could and they would be willing to sign the contracts to do so. When bids are submitted, the city of Pleasant Ridge requires a cash bond. We do not accept an insurance bond, nor do we accept a personal check or anything of the like, and the, the cash bond must be in the amount of five percent of the contract. Um, in this particular case, the city, uh, Tissio was required to deposit twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and those bonds then are returned to the, the, uh, other bidders once the award is given to the, the, uh, low bidder, and then we hold the bid bond from the one that was awarded the contract until the contracts are signed. Part of the reason for this bid is this very reason where another contractor must be called in or they couldn't fulfill their obligation either before or mid, midway, and this makes up somewhat for the difference between the lowest bidder and the next bidder. Having said that, I think all of you understand the relationship that the city has been able to build with Tissio and many of our residents. They have completed a majority of the streets of the city- They have completed a majority of the streets of the city. They have been a good partner and a good friend, and on many occasions, they have held barbecues on the street, met with residents, and worked with the foundation while they were in town. So they have certainly been a good partner, and their quality of work has been excellent. So for this reason, I'm recommending, and I happen to know the circumstances, part of the reason, of the reason that Tissio had to pull out of this contract, and I'm sure it was not something that they wanted to do. So my recommendation is that the city commission authorize the city clerk to return the bid bond to Tissio Brothers.
But the cost of the second lowest bidder is...
Is greater.
Higher.
It is greater. It's almost $36,000 more.
Do you see the problems without getting into the details of resolving themselves so that Tissio might be bidding on projects with us in future years, or do you think this is...
I think they could be out of business by the end of the year.
But I think unfortunately, that's the purpose for the bid bond, is where we have to go through the process of going through the second lowest, but also, as I understand the facts, that after they said they couldn't do it, and you started talking with the second lowest bidder, then they came forward and said, no, we can do it.
Yes.
And...
I was concerned at that point because the circumstances were such that a couple of the brothers had left the state of Michigan and started a business in another state, and then they decided to come back, and there were some personal issues in the family that affected the finances. And then, so I was left to decide whether or not the brothers coming back to Michigan and starting up this $600,000 project, is they would be able to fulfill the contract, or were we going to get into July and August, and situations would get worse, and they leave again, and they're stuck. So, you know, I know, it seems like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but on a $600,000 contract, and for the services and commitment that Tissio has made over the years, I know they wouldn't have done this if they could have avoided it in any instance. And I know that withholding this money would create an additional hardship on it.
How does this feel?
My question is, if we're to gain more money on this contract, of what, what did we say the difference was? $30,000?
$35,000.
Thirty-plus thousand.
I think we keep the bond.
What's up with going to make a motion like that?
I mean, I, I know.
If I could say something, Mr. Perry?
Go ahead.
Sherry, you know that I know Tissio, and I know the Tissio Brothers, but in good, in good conscience, I can't really give them back $37,000 when it's costing us $37,000 more. My interest has got to be on the city and not in the relationship, because I know these guys. So my motion is to not return the bond.
That's supported. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could. Thank you. Yeah, I would, just as the mayor's concerned about future work with Tissio, I, I would, you know, I agree with Commissioner Ravino and Commissioner Bushy. I would just want to be certain that, you know, there, the hardships are catastrophic to the point where they're not going to be able to, you know, submit a bid in the future. And your, your estimation is that that could be the case?
I don't know, man. I've seen companies bigger than them fold and then come back. It's been kind of an interesting journey to see these contractors over the years, the biggest of big, who actually went under. I know they will do everything they can to stay in business, you know, this is, they were born and raised to do this, so... Whether or not, I don't know. It would affect the relationship, obviously, but I, you know, I'd be the betting part of it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is endorsement of the Ferndale proclamation declaring June as day pride. We have the proclamation in our packet. I would suggest that we do it.
Now, was it in the information items?
Information items, in our packet.
Please, that's part of the packet. It was in the back of the information item.
It's a Ferndale one. We may not have one prepared for us because no one requested it for us yesterday, and Sherry didn't have time to do it. So my suggestion is that we merely endorse their proclamation, and if someone wants to have our own proclamation, that's not, that'll be a month late, so be it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate Sherry bringing this, assisting me and bringing this to the table's attention today. It was included in our packet as part of Ferndale's proclamation. They do distribute it to all adjoining cities, us obviously being, their northern neighbor received it, and I think it fits very much the spirit of Pleasant Ridge as well, and would like to see us construct our own proclamation.
Those are a motion to endorse the Ferndale proclamation.
So moved.
Is there a support?
A support.
Do we take a vote?
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Sherry, if you want to get something off even during June, you could switch it to a mayoral proclamation referring to this endorsement, there's some stuff that could be done if you want, if you're in June, otherwise we could get it in July.
Whatever your pleasure.
I don't care. July's fine. Next item, continuation of public discussion items not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am?
Marcus Lussinger, the Devonshire. Two quick announcements that I think the community, as well as commissioners who might already be aware of it, should know about. One is that the whole Transform Woodward project that's been ongoing has spent yesterday, today, and will spend tomorrow looking at Woodward, which included today a two-hour walking assessment of our area of Woodward. Presentation will be tomorrow at 5:00 PM up 13 in Northwood Center in the old Secretary of State's office. It will be a presentation of what they have found in these last three days, looking at everything from Ferndale through Birmingham, so residents...
Does it still say Secretary of State, or what does it say?
It doesn't really say anything. It says meeting.
There's never seen uniforms. There's a uniforms, like a medical uniforms office next door.
It's that empty office scary-looking thing, but hopefully tomorrow it will be filled with live people.
Can they read my license number?
If they do, it's not one you ever want to drive around. The other thing is that the master plan of the City of Pleasant Ridge is going to be revised. Process is beginning now. I would hope that both the commissioners and residents would make sure the planning commission gets all of their ideas. It will be a very thorough review. We're going back to the 1999 plan, which was the most comprehensive one, and we will build from there, but we will obviously be looking at almost 20 years worth of data. So let us know.
Thank you. Any other items not on the agenda? City managers report.
I'm sorry.
Need to flare a gun.
Sharon Barrett Cortenium, her son. I was, I was one of the organizers of the Pleasant Ridge Plant Exchange, and, which was sponsored by ESPN, Eastside Park Neighbors. And...
Man?
She was going to say it. I told you earlier. And while we did not have a sign-in sheet, volunteers said that we had approximately 40 to 50 residents who came and participated. Included in, included in that was Mayor Costelli and Debbie, and Commissioner Perry. But that's not why I'm here.
You're not getting the plant back outside. It's up north.
When, we needed to have, and it was held at Gainesboro Shelter a few weeks ago. And we needed to have the shelter because we needed electricity for coffee, and we needed the washrooms for our volunteers to wash up and all that stuff. But because we aren't a sponsored group, ESPN is not sponsored, we had to pay a $50 rental fee. And it was a plant exchange, it wasn't a sale. So I would like to know how we can proceed in getting a recognition as a, an affinity group within the city. I don't know what the procedure is, I don't know what the criteria is, but if someone would provide it to me, I'd be thankful. And I should also say that thankfully, we didn't have to pay the $50 because the Pleasant Ridge Foundation is going to pay it for us. Along with other mundane expenses. So...
Sherry, is there a set procedure?
Is there an application?
I don't know that there's an application or set procedure, but it's always been service groups are the ones that are recognized, or appointed groups by the governing body. You can look at the groups that are considered city groups, and it's not block clubs or residential, you know, get-togethers, or, like the Colony area club is not a city group. So if that's something you want to review, then I guess we could bring it up on the workshop and this stuff, it'll change a lot.
I get the garden club's spot, too.
Yeah.
Any other items not on the agenda? This is Uber.
Becky Uver, 13, Elm Park, Pleasant Ridge. I just wanted to let everybody in the city know that the garden club has purchased 23 Adaranda crab trees. They will be delivered on Friday and planted on Saturday, and they are going in Stevenson Park. So I think we will all have a much nicer spring next year when they are blooming, and we hope that they do well, and that we do not have a dry summer. So let's all hope for rain on occasion, but I think...
We're working detail on Thursday, correct?
Yes, we are. If you see a bunch of ladies bending over with hammers, pounding in stakes, that's us. And so we're going to stake, and the trees are coming from Wigan's, and they have just been a joy to work with. And I think the stock is of really good quality, and I think we're going to really enjoy having them there. I think it will change the park. They are going to go all along the walk to the armory area on both sides of the walkway, and then on the east side of the walkway over to Oxford. So we're looking forward to doing it, and if anybody wants to come and help pound stakes, we'll help. More importantly, we're going to try and get some water bags, and one of our concerns is keeping those water bags filled. So I need to talk to Sherry about that and see what we can do. But anyway, I wanted you to let you know the good news, so thank you. Thank you.
Any other items not on the agenda? By the way, Becky, I've been informed that your work detail is too ungodly early this morning.
You're talking to women who's never had a job before 10 o'clock in the morning.
City managers report.
I will tell you that at last month's meeting, one of the residents in Oakland Park, John Neal, mentioned a couple things that needed attention. One was that trash containers were not available in Memorial Park. Those are special order items, not special order, but they're an item we have to order. It takes six to eight weeks to get them. They were ordered the next day, and so we are expecting to receive them soon, and they will be in Memorial Park. They were two ordered. He also mentioned that a couple or more of the benches that are in the parks were sinking, and that was true. They all need to be on a solid concrete slab. Some of them are on ribbons. But they have all been raised, and as soon as possible, those that are not on a solid slab will be placed on one. The parking spaces on Amherst between Woodward and the alley were painted last night at 11 o'clock because I threatened someone's life that they were done by yesterday. So we came back last night, and when the rain stopped, they were painted. Much to the delight of the owners of Mays, which one of the owners contacted me to thank for that. We'll see if that helps. Unfortunately, it eliminated one of the parking spaces, but I think it will assist some of the patrons that are visiting.
Does their liquor license come through from the state yet?
Their liquor license was received, I think, last month. She notified me that they had finally received it, and just wanted to make sure that there was no problem in serving alcoholic beverages on the outdoor panel, and there was none. So I let her know that right away. The renovations to Mulberry Park were completed. I'm sure most of you have seen that, and the recreation director has been keeping track of some of the comments, and most people seem to be enjoying that area of the now-opened pool. I wanted to mention a special thanks to one of our residents that lives on, residents that lives on Elm Park for allowing us the use of his Civil War era cannon. It was a fighter that memorial day. It was absolutely awesome. And so to Ron Cleveland, a special thanks, and he will receive a formal letter from the city, but if you missed it, don't miss it again. It'll be here every year. Yes. So, heading on into full guard, I mean, it really was, so... And then another announcement I had was the city commission called the house to remind you that it has been rescheduled to Thursday, June 27th at 7:00 PM at the community center. And then I have a question for you, because I was unclear about how to proceed. There was a concern expressed about the volume of the train whistle, but then, and I know Mayor, you were going to contact an attorney who deals with railroad company, but has that changed?
It has gone back to normal.
Okay. So, I don't need to follow.
I was supposed to be on the phone with the guy, but do know, intervene, so I had to be there.
Exactly. So I can take that off my list. Thank you. That's all I have.
On the subject of the cannon, I just happened to have a note, which will be in the river, but it fought on both sides of the Civil War. It was commissioned as a Union Army cannon in 1862. January was captured in the Second Battle of Manassas in August of 1862. It was recaptured by General George Custer and his cavalry in 1864, I think, yeah, in the Shenandoah Valley. Steve, I'm Steve Braun, has been talking about bringing it here for years, and was always afraid that he'd blow out the window. He used, I think, a third charge, he woke up my neighbor, and scared the heck out of Loretta Lanko, even though both of them knew what was going to happen. And he says he gets some really odd looks when he's going to Civil War musters, and he's going a 575, dragging a cannon, pointing at the car behind him. Other business.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I know we didn't do liaison reports, but briefly, I wanted to mention and thank Scott and Bridget for the Playmakers Bike Event that was held on May 21st at the community center. We had Jason from Back Alley Bikes come and work with the kids, did some instruction of bike maintenance. And we had scheduled, I needed to apologize to some moms and dads because they showed up around 6:30, and the bike parade had already commenced. We kept it contained to the area around the community center, but we had to move the time of the parade up because we had so many little kids circling in bikes randomly that became a real hazard. So we needed to line them up and get them in formation before we risk serious injury. There was great excitement for that event, and hopeful next year that we could have a more formal bike parade of some sort. The Scully's, Dan and Jaclyn, were incredibly helpful, as was Diana Carino and Sue Turpak. They really, really made that a great event. Playmakers are also going to... They really, really made that a great event. Playmakers are also going to have a, their next event is going to be a field day event in Gainesboro. It'll be next week, Tuesday, from 5:00 to 7:00. We're just going to do family reunion, field day type events, egg drops, tug of war, sack races, that kind of thing. And I'm going to beat a dead horse. I really wanted to do the book club. Nobody has taken me up on reading this book. I understand. Please, though, if you haven't read it, check it out. It's a really, a great book. Excuse me. Excuse me?
You want more, more, more books on playgrounds?
Yeah, more books on playgrounds, apparently. But the website is also very helpful for people interested in that. I'm going to switch gears. If anyone wants to take me up on this one, I'm going to start reading this one. It's called Cosmopolitanism. Can't even say it right. But the author's name is Kwame Anthony Papi, and it speaks, the subtitle is Ethics in a World of Strangers, and it speaks how things that we have in common are greater than the things we have in difference. So I want to read that one, and if anybody wants to join me to discuss, I just got a great idea. Why don't we do it in Stevenson Park under the new trees on July 30th? So if anybody wants to pick that up or contact me via email, I can arrange for you to get a copy of that as well. So, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other other business?
Yes, Mayor Costelli? The, I do want to reiterate that Complete Streets is going to do a really, it should be fascinating tomorrow, because we had a wonderful walk today around up 696, across Woodward, down and back, and, you know, luckily we had on bright yellow vests, so it made it much safer, and we were in a pack of people. So it was, it was a really interesting walk. And tomorrow at 5:00 at the Old Secretary of State, and they, he has fascinating ideas, even how, ways to add parking that just would take pretty much paint right here, that, you know, could more than double what we have on the streets and stuff. Also, I went to, Representative Sandy Levin had held a meeting for the Affordable Care Act, and he wants to make sure that people realize enrollment begins October 1st, and the start date for coverage will be January 1st. And we, and he will keep getting more and more information out to the cities because he realizes people will be coming to their government, local governments, to find out information. So we can definitely help you find information on that. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to announce that nominating petitions for the office of mayor and city commission will be available in my office on June 27th, and they're due back by August 13.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Park, all in favor? Hi.